Yes.
Yes.
That's one of them.
Yes, obviously, yes.
It's amazing. I was saying. In the question. Is there? I don't know. And I just do. So I'm thinking. And so. About what it is. Okay. But. On the first. Um. Because we're not so bad in the way. It's usually been different. And we can talk. And we have people. Love it. I'm sorry, Dan. But I'm not able to. And then. Okay. So you see. What we're doing. Uh. When you live on this mountain. And possibly. And we make that. We know you come together. And up there. The right. Not the game. It's a beautiful. It's more than a spending. It's a long time. So. Yeah. You know, she could have been. You do. You do. You do. Well. It's not. Yes. Yeah. It's not. And you know. And I think. It's not. It's not. They're going to the world. Because they can. You can. They're not. What you have to do. One. I just. You know. And. 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 Now. So. It's not. To. To. And how many? These? And. 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 Say. I'm. And now. It's. Here me out. And now. I think. I think. I think. It's. For example. It's. Thank. There's. You. And. 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 It's changing. And. 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 Because I'm. Yeah. And. 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 And.[696.04]
Um.
Cause I know it's summer, I'm not probably just.
That's the way it goes. Sorry.
All of it.
That's right. So. Yeah, we're not it's wrong. And he started thinking, you know. But we did, we did.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Dawson County Board of Commissioners work session today is Thursday, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Appreciate all of you that are in attendance as well as all of you, all those that are with us online. We'll get right into the new business. First up, we have presentation requests for Assistant District Attorney Supplement. District Attorney Lee Dare. Lee.
Thanks so much. I actually have the first two items on there and I. If you don't mind, I'll take up the second first.
Okay.
And that is for the the pass through Voca grant that pays Katie Strayhorn. We finally got the information from them that they have awarded the grant to carry through. The total amount is seventy-four thousand four hundred nineteen. That was the same as last year. There is no match from the county. Some of it comes from Voca federal funds at fifty-seven four nineteen and some from Corona Emergency. Supplemental fund or something like that, C S F and at seventeen thousand dollars. So I'm simply asking the board to approve that. Doesn't cost any money to Dawson County and so I'd appreciate it.
Questions for? Mister Dare on reference to that and you want to move that to the voting session?
Uh, if you don't mind, please, sir.
Okay.
And then.
Y'all good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Next, go ahead.
All right, the next involves Robert Gardner. Robert Gardner is primarily a state paid Assistant District Attorney. Ever since we hired him, basically, I think he may have started out in Hall briefly, but he's basically been here in Dawson County. Because I am short attorneys in both counties right now. It was necessary to move him to Hall County for a time. And when I did move him to Hall County. I moved him at the same supplement that he was getting, but since he moved only sixteen, only six months ago. His Hall County supplement was raised to sixteen thousand seven hundred eighty-nine. I'm now having to move him back to Dawson County. And I had hoped that it would simply be the first of the year and can be involved in the regular budget. However, I'm having to move him back earlier than that because we did lose. One of my other Assistant District Attorney to Shannon Wallace is the DA in Cherokee County who frequently steals from me. Unfortunately.
You're gonna have to put a stop to that.
I know and I can just do about anything I want to. Which is good news for me today because if that's true, then y'all will agree with me.
Yeah, I'm telling you, he's razor blade sharp today.
So what I'm asking do, I'm gonna move him back. He'll still be primarily state paid. But I would like to have a supplement at a minimum of sixteen thousand seven hundred eighty-nine. He's moving back October first. And I'm actually asking for twenty thousand because he's a valuable employee. He's been with me seven years. I really need him and I need him to stay with us. He loves Dawson County. When he, when I moved him from Dawson to Hall County, he said. You know, he said, I'll do what you need me to do. You're District Attorney and I'm not, you know. But he said, I really would like a commitment to be able to come back to Dawson County. And he's a Dawson County resident. I think I'm gonna keep him long term. But I also need to keep him happy and pay for what he's worth because Robert is the kind of guy. He, he sits at his desk. He does his work. He does it completely. He does it well. He shows up in court. He's prepared. He moves his cases. He's, he's a viable asset to my office and I would say to Dawson County as well for prosecution. So that's my request, sixteen seven eighty-nine at a minimum to matches Hall County. But I really would like y'all to consider going to the twenty or somewhere in between if you don't want to go there. But that would be my request and those and that. And I'd be glad to answer questions that you have as well.
Question, is there a difference in workload between Hall County that he performs there and the workload that he performs in Dawson County?
Uh, yeah, in, in, well, no, really, because the workload is, is actually kind of different. Uh, in Dawson County, we handle both the misdemeanors and the felonies because we don't have a state court. We don't have an elected solicitor. So we handle all of those. So the, the volume of the total number of cases is more here. But in, in Hall County, he's been doing drug court with us and he's been carrying a heavy load. Before Judge Deal, who's one of our frankly hardest drivers in terms of the prosecution of cases. So he works real hard wherever he is. It's just, it is a little bit different. He handles. Both felonies and misdemeanors in Dawson County while it's only basically felonies with the accompanying misdemeanors. In Hall County and drug court, which is also done here as well. And that, you know, the judges love Robert wherever he is. They, they like to have him practice before them.
Other question.
You said he lived here?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, he does. He actually lives in Dawson County and that's.
So when he comes back here, then he's not going to have to drive.
Right. Well, that was one of his, that was one of his reasons. Plus the fact he likes Dawson County like.
Well, he's smart. He's highly intelligent.
That's why I hired him.
Yes.
I know. I'll, I'll tell you a brief story. Robert, one of the, had Robert Gardner is because he actually quit a job he had. And delayed school for a time so he could go help his mama because he was having trouble with employees at her restaurant. And he stayed with her about a year and a half to get her back on her feet. After everybody got through crying, we hired. Because he helped his mom. So Robert's a good guy. Any other questions?
Other questions? The state, do they do any, any increases as they did for other like elected officials and stuff? Was there any increases that came down from the state level?
They, they did. They actually, I, I think the most recent thing from them. Was they just did five thousand across the board for state level folks.
So he got that?
And he also got that. Yes, that's correct.
Is that, that's in addition to the supplement?
Uh, well, that was part of his state salary.
Right, right.
Right. And then the supplement, you know, I, I want to at least match his, I want to match his salary at the very.
And he would have got that whether it was in Dawson County or was in.
Correct.
That's correct.
Yeah, anything else, y'all?
Other questions that you have on here?
If we pay him, he don't say here.
I, I think he is. Well, I, I don't want to move, you know, I, I want to duplicate Robert. I cannot do that. He's got to be one place or another. He prefers Dawson. I want to keep him in Dawson. Uh, and I told him I'd move him back to Dawson. We're just gonna have to deal without him in Hall until we can get those positions filled.
So I see here that you're also requesting that be moved to the voting session?
If you don't mind, because I got, because I want to start at October first, that's possible.
Y'all good with that? Yes. Uh, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Y'all have a great day.
Next up, we have presentation of request for raffle fundraiser to benefit emergency service interim emergency service director Jason Dooley. Jason.
Thank you, Chairman, Board. So the modern woodman of America's nation's third largest fraternal benefit society. They frequently work with their local communities through volunteer projects to make a difference where their members live, work and play. Alex Williams has approached us about raising money for our department. This will be the third time that she's held a raffle fundraiser for the department and so far it's raised about over thirty thousand dollars for. The department in the donation fund. Uh, she's again proposed a thirty-one gun raffle. Tickets will be forty dollars each sold between January sixteenth and February twenty-eighth. Uh, for a chance to win a variety of firearms. Once the raffles completed and the portion's been paid for the firearms, the remainder of the, the proceeds will go to the department. And they're only selling a thousand tickets. And generally, we use this money in the donation fund to pay for things that we wouldn't expect the taxpayers to pay for, like food for our. Part holiday parties, awards and things for our firefighters and, and other general stuff.
Questions for Chief Dooley? Thank you.
Vicky, could I, what, what, does the money go directly to them or is, you feel, does it go to you, Vicky?
It, it, it goes to. She generally writes a check and we hand it to finance and they put it in the.
Donation.
Okay. Well, years passed. It's hard to remember all, yeah. And, and tell me again what you use this for?
We generally use it for things like if we have a cookout, a family cookout in the summertime to pay for the food and things like that. Awards for firefighters for like firefighter of the year or EMT of the year. We pay for, occasionally we'll pay for some training classes for to send firefighters to or their lodging while they're there.
So, so is it their discretion, Vicky, what they can use it for? Okay. Okay.
Other questions? Thanks, sir. Next up, we have presentation request to use special purpose local option sales tax. Splash six funds to upgrade fields at Rock Creek Park, Park Rec Director Matt Payne. Matt.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. It's good to have you. Uh, let me come talk to you again about the Recreation Department. It is finally time to do some upgrades to the ballfields at. Rock Creek Park. If you remember, we have grass in fields at the park and. From the naked eye as a fan looking at them, they look beautiful from a playing standpoint, from a management standpoint, from a maintenance standpoint, they're very, very difficult to work with. As you know, grass grows up, there settles down, creates huge lips, makes it kind of dangerous. I don't want to use the word dangerous, but they're not the ideal playing conditions and from a maintenance standpoint, they are very, very bad. Hard to work. So with that, we are, the Recreation Department is requesting that we use. Uh, Splosh funds to upgrade these fields to completely strip all the grass off. To go with all dirt in fields, have them re-graded, the whole works where they drain correctly. And have them completely upgraded. I had a colleague. Come and give me a very good budgetary price of about twenty-two to twenty-five thousand per field to get them. Where they need to be. So the, with respectfully, the Recreation Department is asking for. Uh, not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand to upgrade the fields at. Rock Creek and I have checked with Vicky and this is Splosh six can fund this project.
Questions for Matt?
Not on that, but I had a citizen ask me the other day about tennis court. Rehab to pickleball courts. Is there some more? I know that's getting to be more popular. You talk about that all the time.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Gaines.
Part of that in Splosh six as well?
Um, no, but if you'll recall, I did put that into our projected budget for the upcoming year. To upgrade, which it's, it's time to redo the courts anyway. You can only keep tennis courts for so long and it's time to redo all of them anyway. When we do that, I was going to convert at least four of our six into both tennis and pickleball courts at that time. Now that is contingent, of course, upon the budget passing. But that's, if that, if that is something that doesn't get passed in the budget, that is definitely something that we could use. Impact fees for, I would, I would imagine because of the enormous growth that we're getting in that pickleball community. Extremely, extremely popular.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions for Matt? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up, we have presentation of FY twenty twenty-three. Intergovernmental agreement between Dawson County and the Board of Education concerning school resources officer, Ms. Davis.
Um, yes, sir. Mister Chairman, Commissioners, um, first I'd like to see is the sheriff here or anyone from the sheriff's office who may want to speak to this? No, okay. I just wanted to offer that opportunity. Okay, so what's coming before you is very much like the agreements that have been in place in the past. It's just been updated this year to provide for school resource officers. This is an intergovernmental agreement that exists between. Dawson County and the school district. It provides for the sheriff to make available seven. Um, SROs as they're referred to at the various schools in Dawson County. The school board will pay fifty percent of the cost for a forty-two hour work week. Anything after hours like football games or special events would be paid under a different fee program, not covered by this agreement. Um, it's a one-year contract and if it meets with your approval, then we would authorize the chairman to sign. Interestingly, this is an agreement that does come before the county for the board signature and then will. Tonight, I understand is on the school district's agenda for their approval. And they've, have they approved it? Okay, and they've already approved it. So I think it might make sense to move this to the voting session if that meets with everyone's approvals, given the term of school that we're in at this point.
I'm good with that? Questions for County Attorney?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Who is responsible for, I mean, this, this has got a lot of meat in it. The SRO will do this, will do that. Who's responsible? To let them know what they're responsible for. This is a lot of materials.
It is. Um, there's a set of standard operating procedures attached as exhibit A to the agreement that spells out some more details. Um, but all of this is going to be under the authority of the sheriff's office. So these are employees of the sheriff. He's managing these employees and, and they have to follow the SAPs for not only this agreement, but also just general sheriff's office SAPs. So we have no authority or obligation to be supervising this agreement. It's still going to run under the sheriff's umbrella.
Well, that really needs to be gone over because shoot, that, that's a lot of stuff in there.
Other questions?
Yeah, I just, uh, I brought it up earlier this year. I just got a concern that we still need more officers, but. A hundred percent of their forty-two hours is, is based at school system and their military rate is twice as much as ours. I believe they didn't pay more than forty, fifty percent. To be forty-two hours, they aren't paying the forty-two hours. We could pay the benefits or the. Uh, uniforms and things like that that we're using here and when school's out. But since their military rate's so high. Everybody blames the toll rate on the county usually. We don't know the schools rate, but. Uh, just my personal opinion, I think that they ought to pay more than that and we need more officers. Uh, they said they had already set their budget when I talked with them, but. You know, we, we have to amend our budget during the year and looks like they could look at their budget and amend it and. Put more officers, protect our students.
Well, this is, is this one per school? That's what we got.
But if somebody's out.
I know, yeah.
They need, right now, I mean, they had a case, it was in the paper last week or so, they had that threat. I mean, we need an investigator, especially on the level of high school, the middle schools to stop some of this stuff that we have investigated working within the system, but. You know, they're not, they're not willing to add anybody because they said they set their budget, but. Same, we changed our budget during the year, like we changed theirs.
Well, just a couple of comments on that part, Commissioner. Um, it's at page six that the compensation is addressed and it does indicate that the fifty percent is of all actual expenditure. So that would include personnel costs and all other costs, which would include that overhead and insurance and uniform and cars. So, you know, I don't know, I haven't seen a financial accounting on this and so I don't know how that. Weighs out in terms of dollar for dollar of hours worked versus how much more is included in the. Overhead related costs that are part of this fifty percent. I don't know if it's close to equal or not. I just, I have no idea. You know, as to the additional officers, I'm not privy to any discussions on that. But I just would note that if there's an actual event at the school, obviously the sheriff's office is going to be called in with the full force of the sheriff's office as needed. Um, this is just a daily presence type agreement.
And why is it a forty-two hour work week? I thought most stuff was forty. What did that forty?
Get there early for, cause there's hours and delays after.
It is provided to be an estimate and I think my, my, my guess would be, I wish someone from the sheriff's office was here because I hate to put words in their mouth in terms of how the process actually works. But my guess would be, um, the way it's referenced as an estimated forty-two hour work week and then anything over that is paid at a different rate. Um, my guess is that it is exactly as suggested that, you know, coming early or leaving late or something happens. They may be off their actual hours. So instead of having some kind of situation where over forty hours, it automatically goes under a different pay plan. There's a little bit of a, of a leeway to, to give that an actual two hours. Because the, you know, the intended hours is school operational hours and then it provides for anything outside of that or outside of the forty-two hours to be. Performed by off-duty law enforcement at a rate established between the sheriff and the school district.
Any other questions? Thank you. We're good with moving that? All right. County manager report, Dave.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have just really no report other than just your key indicator report for the month of August. Uh, as well as a list of agreements and contracts is in your packet. And it's my report.
Questions for the county manager? Thank you, David. County Attorney Report, Ms. Davis.
Um, nothing for the public report and no need for executive session to my knowledge tonight.
Thank you. That ends our work session. We will take about a ten-minute break and then we'll be back for our. Voting session. Thanks to all y'all that are here with us as well as those who are online. We'll be back in about ten minutes. Thank you.